Yeah, Jamin's here, Jamin's there and Joe's there. Can you hear me, Jamin? How about you, Joe?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Say something again.
I can hear you.
Perfect.
I can hear you.
I can hear you.
Thanks, guys.
My pleasure. Hey, it's six o'clock, so I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Would you join me with the pledge of allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tom Rao.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Tom Rao.
Present.
Jamin Hunter.
Here.
Mayor Rao.
Here.
Councilman, uh, Labrery.
Here.
And no Councilman Fitzsimons today.
Are we in compliance with our open meeting law?
Yes, sir.
Public comment. Do we have any public comment with anything that's on our agenda tonight? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, I would like to have the minutes of the June 16th meeting table. There's some changes I'd like to make in them, and I'd like the city clerk to be here at that time. Okay? So other than that, I would move that we approve the consent agenda. Do we have, do we have a second?
I'll, I'll second the motion to approve the consent agenda with the modification to the minutes. Removal of the minutes.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with, uh, withholding out of the, the 16th minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay. Uh, Summer, is that, you're on the consent agenda, so your, your application has been approved? So, I know last time you come in and got one, you waited the whole meeting and it wasn't, you didn't hear it, so. Okay. Yes. Okay, items for discussion and possible action. Approve or deny Lincoln County Fair and Rodeo's request for a donation to help pay for the entertainment at the upcoming fair and rodeo. Wait, hold on a second. You wanna turn that mic on?
Oh, yeah, that'd be great.
All right.
I, uh, gave a paper on what we were looking at. I originally come from, three months ago and started at 10,000, and then with your fund that went down, we whittled it down to if I could possibly get 6,000 for, we're having a clown, barrel man, funny man, do everything. He's also bringing the mini bucking bull this year, so that's what we would, would really like some help with. Um, he does a, this Donnie Landis, he used to be in the PRCA and stuff, and he still runs the mini bucking bulls and has his own, um, like finals up in Idaho and stuff. He's a great guy. He's a good, he's, he'll be wonderful. We've never had anybody like him before, so. So I just need to say pretty please and see what we can do.
You picked kind of a bad time.
I know. I've been here a few months trying to do this, so.
Because our city clerk isn't here, and he got the budget all right there on the, on the program, and he could tell you if we have it or if we don't have it, and where it would come from.
Right.
We know where it'd come from, come out of room tax.
Right, but there wasn't any the last time I looked.
You don't have any idea? No?
I was at the meeting that she was at, and, uh, the money wasn't there in the room tax fund, from what I understood.
And that was a month ago.
Yes, but that now, now we're into the new budget because it's July 1st, but I don't know what the new budget is.
I, I thought we were rolling, uh, I could be wrong. I thought we were, had like 25,000 that we were in the new budget, but, uh, I thought I had my budget book right here with me, and I don't. Oh, actually. I don't wanna speak for Craig on that, but I will look through my little budget book.
Linda's doing some checking in the other room, so it'll be just a minute. We wanna give it to you if we have it.
To me, I'd also like to say, this will be my, I'm retiring from the fair, I'm retiring from the Y, I'm leaving the county, but I wanna thank you guys for always taking care of us there ever since I've come in.
You're leaving the county?
Yeah. You've been mean to me. You never come see me no more. I don't.
I don't, I don't know how to bow.
I went and found it.
We, we, I wanna say the final group was 80, and we were putting 50 into parks and rec.
Do we, what do you have to know this?
Well, as soon as, 'cause like I said, I've been after this for the three months, but I know you guys have went through a lot and this and that. I mean, as soon as I can. I mean, the rodeo's not till whenever, but, you know, till August, but.
Okay. I don't know that, I don't know that I, I could make a decision right now with Craig not being here. I wish he'd, I wish we'd had a, he'd have said something about it on the agenda, but.
Yeah.
Anyway. But Tommy says, we not like to give it to you if we can. So how can we handle it?
Have to table until another meeting when our clerk is.
Is that gonna be too late?
When's your next meeting?
We've got a meeting in two weeks, and then the fair's not until like the 10th through 12th or something?
Well, it's the 10th through the 13th, so.
Okay, 10th through the 13th of August. A small window.
About all we can do.
That's what we have to do. It's what we have to do. So.
Okay, I guess we'll.
Yes, ma'am, I got you right here.
Craig forgot me last time, so. Well, thank you for your time, and we'll see you next time.
I apologize that we couldn't give you an answer tonight, for sure.
I have high hopes. You don't wanna see me cry, but, thank you.
All right.
All right.
Thank you for coming.
All right, we're gonna table this, uh, item A until our next meeting. Okay, item B, approved or denied resolution number, uh, 2022-03, resolution of the City Council, the City of Caliente, Nevada, providing for the transfer of the city's 2022 private activity bond volume cap to the Nevada Rural Housing Authority and other matters related thereto.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members and city staff. Thank you for your time today. My name is Kevin Hickey, and I'm the Business Development Specialist for the Home at Last Program at Nevada Rural Housing. Today I'll provide an update on the Home at Last homeownership program impact within Caliente, and provide an overview of the source, use, and limitations of private activity bonds, and why Nevada Rural Housing is requesting the transfer of your unused bond cap. In 2006, Nevada Rural Housing Authority launched the Home at Last Down Payment Assistance Program funded by private activity bond cap. The City of Caliente has been supportive of the homeownership program from the beginning by transferring $594,000 of unused bond cap to Nevada Rural Housing Authority over the years. And since 2006, the Home at Last program has provided 12 home buyers in Caliente with $1.3 million in affordable mortgages, $36,000 in down payment assistance, and $40,000 in estimated federal tax savings. Fifteen years after launching Home at Last, the program has helped over 10,000 rural Nevadans achieve affordable homeownership, and program-wide, that's a total of $2.2 billion in affordable mortgages, $63 million in down payment assistance, and a further $36.7 million in estimated federal tax savings returned to home buyers through the Mortgage Credit Certificate Program. The Home at Last program has been using previous bond cap transfers to provide the Mortgage Credit Certificate Program, commonly referred to as the MCC. Aside from providing homeowners with tremendous tax savings year after year for the life of the loan, the tax credits returned to homeowners is money that is reinvested in your local economy. The MCC helps home buyers qualify for a mortgage because the estimated tax savings is considered additional qualifying income, and that additional income also helps to lower debt-to-income ratios, which is especially helpful for those carrying student loan debt. The MCC provides first-time buyers or qualified veterans with a dollar-for-dollar federal tax credit equal to 20% of the mortgage interest paid every year for the life of the loan as long as the, the home buyer continues to live in the home as their primary residence. And for example, adding the MCC to a $345,000 mortgage with an interest rate of 6.25% would generate an estimated tax credit equal to $4,290 in the first year alone. That's an additional $357 in additional monthly income to the family. Nevada Rural Housing Authority, uh, serves only rural Nevada, so a transfer of unused bond cap to us means the benefit will remain in rural Nevada. To continue supporting the Home at Last program, we're asking for your transfer of your unused 2022 bond cap to Nevada Rural Housing. I thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Something that we've done every year.
Yeah, it happens annually.
Well, I'd, I'd move that we approve resolution 2022-03. We have a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
Joe, can you hear us? And Joe's gone, so technically we can't have a meeting at this point, 'cause we don't have a quorum.
Oh, are you, oh dang, this is.
Lost them both, huh? We lost both of them now.
So we wanna wait a few minutes, see if we get anybody back?
It's, uh, what is the thing, it's?
So, we, technically, we can't discuss.
Yeah, we can't even, yeah, we can't even talk about it.
If we wanna wait, I don't know, a couple minutes and see if they get back on, if not, we can just adjourn the meeting, and, I mean, this was the last item on the agenda, so.
Yeah.
All right, let me.
I get, yeah.
Who you calling? Okay, that's what I was gonna do.
Now Joe might have got into town, and he might be on his way over, I don't know.
Most likely, he was coming across the flat. He got good coverage out there, and he gets above somebody, loses.
7, 0, 2, 2, 6, 6, 5, 3, 2, 1, is not available.
Well, what do we wanna do? Do we wanna have a recess for a few minutes and wait, or are we gonna have to counsel this?
Your pleasure, I guess, Mayor.
Uh, Jamin is trying to come back.
Are you there, Jamin?
He's connecting still.
Jamin, are you on?
There he is, are you?
I just got back on.
Okay, did, did you hear the motion?
I did hear the motion.
Okay.
We need a second.
And I will second that.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve, um, what is it? I can't remember the resolution here. Resolution 22-03, to transfer our, uh, bond volume cap to the Nevada Rural Housing Authority. And we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay. Okay, how much is that? It is?
$60,221.
Yep.
So it's not money, it's a bond.
Okay. Updated concerning ongoing grants administration.
Hi, I am so excited. No, actually, it's been rather frustrating. The State Historic Preservation Organization, we had sent them plans in April, and so we had not really heard from them, but we didn't think it was gonna be bad, you know, we figured it was okay. So, of course, we had already had our, we had already hired the contractor and stuff, and we really felt like we would be moving on this. They came back beginning of, the end of May, beginning of June, and said, hey, um, you say you're gonna replace 20-some-odd windows. Well, we want pictures to make sure that they should be replaced. Then they wanted to know how we came about finding out what the, uh, paint color was before, and they had added, I just thought it was funny, they had said, there must be a picture from then. And there is, it's in black and white, so I still don't know what color it is, but whatever. And then there was another item, so Carmen, uh, Polly, and myself, we got those documents together, and that was about two weeks ago, and we're still waiting to hear from them. Since they have to be part of the pre-construction meeting, because this is a, uh, federal, um, well, it's on the National Registry, everything has to be just... So, I'm trying to keep you posted. I've been in contact with Spectra, they, they understand. They said this stuff does happen, and I've also been in touch with CDBG, and they didn't give me much hope in how long it's gonna take these guys to get through this, but we're still on our way. Sorry.
Is there anybody in the governor's office that we can call to light a fire under these guys to get things going?
Who was it? Was it you who was talking to me?
Well, we did have connection with the Lieutenant Governor, but.
Oh, that's right, that's right. I don't know, but you know what? I will reach out to someone and find out.
See who we can talk to and see if we get things going. I was hoping we'd get things rolling here in June.
Oh, we, we totally believe that, but, yeah. Sorry, welcome to our reality, it's no fun. Okay, do you want me to?
Do you have something for the clerk's report?
I do.
Okay.
All right, he has utilities here. He says, utility rates have been updated to reflect the approved increases to electric sewer and trash. Actually, he still has to do that, he's going to do that when he gets back Monday, okay? Um, since we haven't put a bill out yet, it's, it's okay. All right, he received an email from Dave Lutrell, Lincoln County, I mean, Lincoln County Power District General Manager, regarding the purchased power adjustment clause, the PPAC, which is how they recover costs associated with changes in their power supply costs. Starting with our bill for October service, the PPAC is likely to increase our costs by more than 10%. That's kinda sad. He has a finances, he said, the year-end closure process has begun, and we will continue to make the needed entries and adjustments in preparation for our upcoming audit. The Public Utilities Commission approved our appeal, and we will not be charged a penalty for our late filings related to the universal energy charge quarterly reports. Thank goodness. All information has been submitted for our workers' compensation audit, we await their findings and recommendations. The 2022-23 final budget has been accepted by the Nevada Department of Taxation. And City Council needs to file their contributions and expenses reports, CNE report, through Aurora by July 15th, 2022. Just a gentle reminder. You already did. And that's all.
Okay. Public Works Managers Report.
They're in front of you, do you want me to go over it with you?
Is there any questions on that? They moved the truck out there by the, by the battleborn deal.
Yeah, he's had different trucks in and out of there.
Moving around out there. We still don't have any rocks or anything around that fire hydrant out there.
You're right.
So, I think we oughta do that. It sits out in the middle, it's gonna get run over, I think, we can.
How is hiring coming?
I have a list of applicants, I've talked to a few about, um, interviews. I was turned down by one already that was one of the better applicants, but we're working on getting interviews done for next week. So, once we get interviews done. The plan right now is me, Jamin, and Logan.
Any other questions? Any questions for Grant? Joe or, well, Joe isn't on yet. Yeah, Joe is, Joe's back.
Yeah, sorry, I don't know why I lost service right there, but something happened, trucker passed me or something, but, no, I don't know that.
Yeah, Jamin, you, you okay?
I'm okay, I know what's, I got, I'm up to speed on that.
Okay.
Actually, go, go back real quick, Grant, we still, um, you're just down the two employees still, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Discussion of legal issues, Mr. Katsky. Okay, any questions for our attorney?
Just in regards to your meeting with the commissioners.
Yeah, so they didn't take any action on Monday morning. They understood the city's position and they also understand that dissolution of the RTC is not allowable without our consent, so they didn't take any action. They discussed it for a little bit, there's a phone call with Wendy Rutter, but again, there wasn't much discussed, but there wasn't anything done.
Okay. Have they imposed the diesel tax yet? Not yet. Okay. Okay, any other questions for our attorney? Building Inspector's Report.
Well, I have one slight problem, I can't turn on my microphone. I guess I wasn't doing it right, I've been pushing that thing for ten minutes. Anyway, you guys have my report in front of you, you should have. I had a meeting today with Clover Creek Organics. I finally got a finalized set of plans and I'm reviewing it right now, so. They still have not selected a general contractor yet. They're working on it, I've heard that before. They are going to have their concrete crew back up here supposedly next week and finish up the concrete work at least, they're working on the underground and plumbing and electrical both. Lincoln County Power was at the meeting today and they're, they have to change out that transformer, so it's going to be at least three weeks before they can get that transformer changed out. And that's really all I've got unless somebody's got something.
Any questions for our building inspector?
None from me.
Okay, thanks, Ken.
Thank you.
Discussion of issues related to public safety, fire chief. You want to report on our fires or nothing? Okay, fireworks was a good success, in fact, the whole weekend was pretty good, pretty successful.
I've heard so many good things from people coming in.
Okay, any questions for the fire chief? If not, we'll move on. Parks and Beautification, Mr. Fitzsimons is not here, do we have any reports on anything there? Okay, Community Development and Planning, Councilman Rao. The only thing I have to say is that I've seen last week and then pretty much all day that the Power District has been working out at the industrial park, getting all that fixed up out there now. And that's all I've got to report. Any questions for Councilman Rao? Okay, Tourism, Boxcar Museum, Joe, you got anything to report?
No, I don't. The only, actually I do, seemed like a little bit lower number for the fourth, tons of locals, but might have just been because of the weekend and I do know like the parks were pretty empty as well, state parks, so probably economy too. Probably took a little ding on the average Fourth of July weekend on that end of things. Locally though, it was good.
Probably due to being it's on, on a Monday, probably didn't help us either.
No, but um, Fourth of July night, up to the fireworks and then at the park seemed good, but then, I mean, there was a huge train of cars leaving the fireworks, so locally it was a success.
Yeah.
But we were working and controlling state parks and honestly, their visitation was probably the lowest I've ever seen of them before. That's it.
Okay, any questions for Joe? Okay, Public Utilities, Mr. Hunter.
Not too much to report, just want to say that Grant and Logan and the Parks crews have been doing a great job on their things, I've noticed that Grant and Logan, they had to tip trash cans themselves today, they worked pretty hard and were managed to get it done with just the two of them, so want to give them a thumbs up for that. Other than that, everything seems to be running, the fourth did get done, there's some things we could improve on for next year, but overall, we did very well.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Hunter? Okay. I don't have too much to report, I think like everybody else is saying, I think the weekend went really well. There was a, I thought a little big crowd on the, on the field right after for the kids' games and stuff, but then it kind of petered out, I think everybody that was here from out of town started headed out, heading out of here after that, so. Anyway, anybody have any questions for me? Okay, public comment? Yes, sir?
For the record, it's Mike Reese, I just wanted to say a thank you and a job well done to all the volunteers who put on the festivities over the weekend, planned, organized, direct. I thought it went very, very well, I attended the fireworks show and I did see that the ball field was pretty well-packed and stuff in there, so I was kind of on the outskirts and so I just want to say a thank you.
Okay, any other public comment? Yes, sir?
When is the twenty-fourth celebration in Panaca, on the twenty-third?
Yeah, it's on the twenty-third.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Schedule for our next meeting and topics for our agenda.
Be the twenty-first and obviously we will have the Fair Board back on that agenda. And that's about all I know right now.
Okay. Okay. Then with our agenda being exhausted, I'm going to end this meeting. Alleluia. And they'll be done in just a minute.
Recording stopped.